2022 at 6:02 PM. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hey, Derek. I believe we get set up here before you start grilling Cindy.
You're gonna grill me?
I don't know.
Barbecue style.
No, hungry. Really?
We're talking about who's?
Burgers. Steak.
We don't have the walkie talkie to order.
I know. I guess they're just gonna have to assume what we want tonight.
I think so. They should know by now.
So, welcome, everybody, tonight. Thank you for coming. I know it's a beautiful day on Thursday. Although it's supposed to get some rain here sometime soon tonight.
Or tomorrow.
We need it.
I saw severe weather tomorrow.
Thunder and lightning?
Hail.
Oh, hail.
Oh, hail?
Oh, what did you just say?
I said, oh, hail?
Had that southern drawl that day.
Yeah, hail.
It creeped out.
All right. Okay. So, first on our agenda is Cindy Baxter for the cemetery.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, I'm Cindy Baxter for the cemetery commissioners, I'm the clerk. I just have a couple of things. And I know you've probably been informed about this, but I brought a picture of the damage done to the window in the cemetery office. We now cleaned out because of all the shredding, we're using that back office. So, I'd like to give this to you. Jim said he took pictures and documented it, but I wanted to give that to you as well so that you could see, because I remember at the town meeting, he said departments should say if there's any problems. There's a lot of holes in the walls.
Okay.
They need to be spackled, and I don't know if there's any funds available for that, or if I just gotta kinda throw out my barbecue and get a bunch of friends to come up and give me a hand with that, but I would like to see if you have anything that you could do to help us with that. I know Jim said he would give me paint, but we are enjoying...
So, is the window leak fixed?
No.
So, window leak has to be fixed along with the wall?
Yeah, I mean, that's in a separate area, the wall is kinda, it's on the right-hand side, there's some pretty good-sized holes in it from previous, not anybody getting mad, it's put up high in the air, they had something mounted there. So, but I showed that to Jim, the way to know because of, and Jim Dusty, just because we wanna keep you informed and let you know what that backspace looks like. We actually did have our first public meeting in there last Saturday, which was cool. Which brings up another question, I did request a sign for the office. I don't know if that's still on the list of things to do, but...
It is.
If we're gonna have, we're gonna have our meetings there, so we'll put up something temporarily, I guess, but also, the board has asked me to come and ask about a gift account. We did just, and I brought the perpetual care and the plot fund accounts, and they're separate.
Jeff, mind down.
Join the meeting.
We did just recently use the remaining amount from the Karnas Unrestricted Gift, that's the name of the family, we used that to repair the tractor. So, I'm not sure if that was an account that was just named gift, but we had gotten a couple of checks, a hundred dollars from this person and a hundred dollars from another person, and it wasn't denoted for maintenance, it was denoted as a gift. So, if it says in here that the town commissioners may choose to receive gifts or be pleased for maintaining cemeteries or cemetery lots, but these weren't denoted as being there to maintain anything. So, I guess what we're looking for is, is there any way that we can have a gift account that the commissioners could use on their vote of, you know, two to three, or all in favor for whatever they want, just an example. Let's say we wanted to buy a flag. Well, we can't buy that out of perpetual care because it's not for the grounds. We're hesitant to use money unwisely for, from the plots account, because that's to have funds, like if we need to repair or replace piping or anything like that. So, if we had a gift account that the commissioners could manage and determine that while this is a good use for this money, we're just wondering if that's a possibility, if there's some particular way to do that and to let us have control over that upon our request. And how we would go about setting that up?
Well, you came to the right place. Jim? Is this doable?
Yeah, we'd have to work with the treasury and the treasurer and the accountant on doing something like that.
Okay. I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea, anytime we can get, somebody wants to donate money and help out the town.
Right.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so I should, I'll make an appointment to talk to them?
Yeah, I'll work with you, Cindy, on that. Just stop by the office and we'll get it done for you.
Okay, very good. I think that's it.
Okay. So, we know, and you did, well, the damage to the building, we'll try to address that once we have funds available again. We're going through our fiscal end in the beginning, so as of July 1st, we'll have more funds available, also with the sign too, correct? So, we're waiting on July 1st for funds to become available.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm enjoying being on the cemetery commission, I'm enjoying that very much.
Very good.
We've got some letters and some information requests, and so it's very enjoyable, I'm finding it very gratifying.
Since you're here, are there still a lot of plots there available?
Well, that's something that's on our list to have Jim find out for us, and that's what he was going to be doing for us until we found out that he couldn't be working for us independently anymore. So, like you said, after July 1st, that's on our list of things to be done.
Okay.
There is a possibility of adding more grades, there are plots still available, he just has to give us a number, and he can't do that until he's got time to work for us. We're trying not to use him, we're using him very sparingly as Jeremy requested, so, but as soon as I've got a number, I will come back and let you know.
Have you looked into the software that we all talked about?
There's no money.
Okay.
So, I am taking an online free Excel course myself. I have gone into the computer that we have out there now, and I have made a program, and I've been doing some time studies for Sylvia, because she's trying to write up a grant for archiving the information, digitizing the information from South Warren Cemetery. So, I have started something, I have also started a document that records the plots that were sold in fiscal year 2020, who owns them, when they bought them, how much went into perpetual care account, how much went into plots account, and how many plots are available in that one person's purchase, and who's already been intermed in that. So, so I'm in the process of doing that, and I have to go backwards and get some of the information, what happened previously in the year before I came on board. But, so we are working to try to get those things much easier to access. But in order for me to do it properly and to help Jim do it properly, I need to take this online, free online 12-hour course to make sure that I know what I'm doing, so it won't be like I just wanted to do it.
Now, with that said, couldn't ARPA be used for that? Software?
Yeah, there's a possibility of that, yeah, sure.
Well, add it to the list of ARPA requests, I guess, right? We can sort it out.
If you know, if you have a software in mind and how much it would cost, let us know, because we might be able to utilize ARPA money to do that, to automate the system, to make it a little better for everybody. Because I think we could justify it, because it could be utilized as, you know, I'm sure you could do something web-based, so if somebody's looking up a relative versus going into the public and, you know, trying to figure things out, they could do it more automated and say, okay, here's where my relative is.
I actually received some information on a couple of kinds from this one company, and it sounded very good, it would make it much easier for the superintendent to know exactly where this person is, what's available, and all sorts of information, and it would be much less time-consuming than me trying to build this house of sticks myself than to have it already built, so.
Right.
So, I'll bring that information to Jim.
Yeah, before, you know, again, Excel is a great thing to learn, so I encourage you to learn it, but before you start building a whole system, let's see if we can get you the system that's already designed for that purpose. And again, utilization of ARPA, we could probably do something like that for you, because I think the town really needs to go more automated with a lot of this stuff, so.
Okay, well, I thank you very much, that's pretty exciting, so I'll stop by and see you for that information. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, moving on, now we're gonna hear the animal control officer report. Thank you.
I'm just here for an annual status update. I've been in this position for a year now, so some of the things that I've been working on this past year, the first thing that I did was I got all the supplies that were needed.
Sorry, can you just identify yourself?
Tamara Dufrane, animal control officer.
Thank you.
So, you know, I have a chip scanner to see if the animal has a microchip, I have catch poles, I have a dog trap, if there's ever a dog that's loose in town that could utilize a trap. I have a ramp if there's anyone in town who has, one of the kennel inspections that I did, some of them have some elderly dogs, and one of their fears was that, you know, when it comes time for, you know, them passing away, you know, getting them into the car because they're large breed dogs, seniors that live by themselves don't have any family in town, and I said, you know, just call me, you know, I mean, the ramp probably wouldn't be good for that, but I do have collapsible stretchers as well. Then I said, I could probably call a police officer who would help me load into your vehicle, you know, if you need to take, you know, your dog to be cremated or anything like that. So, we have, we have all the supplies that we could need, everything's holding up very well, I expect these supplies to last for years without needing to be replaced. So, I also set up the town cellphone, and I've heard a lot of positive comments about having a phone line that goes directly to me, especially from the town clerk when it comes to scheduling kennel licenses or if someone has a question. In the past, I guess, when someone was trying to get in contact with the animal control officer, it was a game of phone tag back and forth, or emails back and forth, and so the fact that I am available by cellphone text message, the town email, I also established the Facebook page, so that receives Messenger, so I'm very connected to people, there's a way for people to get in contact with me. Sometimes I have to monitor that a little bit so that I'm not available, you know, at 2:00 in the morning. But, you know, there's definitely a lot of ways to get in touch with me. I also updated the town website, so if you go to the animal control link, there's a lot of different informational links that you can go on, there's the form for the voucher for people who are low-income, who are on assistance, they can get help from the state with the Mass Animal Fund for a no-cost spay or neuter for their animals. So, you can go and get that document right then and there, you could print it out. So, the only thing that is not added on there that I do wanna add on is a convenient link to our bylaws when it comes to dogs, I think that would be good to add on there, but there's quite a bit that's already been added on there. I have completed all of the continuing education that was required for my first year, I'm only missing one and a half hours of continuing education, and that is scheduled for the 21st, which is the annual ACO luncheon, even though it's on Zoom, and that's for updates and news in the animal control world, so that will complete my first, my first year required training. I've also established communication with several other ECOs, in fact, I just spoke with another ECO today and have that person's number, because we have two other ECOs living in our town that work for other towns.
Oh, really?
So, that was a fun, a fun surprise. But, there's, there's a good network for handling certain situations, so that if I'm unsure how other ECOs have handled a situation, if they have any recommendations, any tips, I can reach out to them, and they always get back to me, they always provide their experience, what's worked, what's not worked. The other thing that I did was that our town is required to have an emergency response for animals, we have that with people, with our CERT team for the high school being our shelter, but we need a plan in place of what to do with animals, domestic animals. So, the CERT team and I met with the Central Massachusetts Disaster Animal Response Team, I don't know if there's a cute way of saying it, but it's basically CM DART, and they would provide everything for us, we could sign a no-cost contract with them, and if an emergency happened, they would be providing our services, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and they have volunteers across the state, they have a big truck that has kennels in it, they have extra kennels that they store in their volunteer shed, so if there was a disaster, and a lot of times people won't come to a shelter without their animal. So, having a plan in place where, okay, come to safety, come with us, we have somewhere where you can bring your dog, your cat, whatever. So, we have agreements that had been in place previously, but they are from Second Chance, and they're from VCA Wickabog, and they're from years ago, with people who don't even work there anymore. And they are also responsible for handling multiple towns if needed, you know, and I know Second Chance very rarely has a free kennel, they always try to make sure that they're helping animals, their kennels are typically full. So, if we had a big disaster where our residents in town needed help with their animals, we would, we need to count on something else, and I believe that this DART team would be a great option. So, I'll talk more about them in just a moment, because I do have three specific goals for my next year in this position, but that was, that was a meeting that took place, they had absolutely great information, and I definitely would like to propose, you know, having a meeting with them moving forward. But, the last thing for this year that I wanted to highlight was, I did create a call log for the month of May that was provided to you. I'm trying to work on my documentation system, because there's a lot of communication that happens that I feel needs to be documented, especially since there are in-person calls which should be documented, but there's a lot of online conversations with people that, you know, takes up time, takes up resources, and if guidance is provided, I should, you know, have documentation for that as well. So, the month of May there, I would describe that as a typical month, I broke them down to animal inspector, which is a position I also hold under the Board of Health, and I responded to 10, 10 calls, quarantines, visits, I responded to 10 for the month of May. Phone, phone calls and online, which includes Facebook Messenger and emails, there were 40, 40 communications with people, and then my in-person visits were 13 for the month of May. Then, that's definitely a typical month, I will say that we are a very, very busy town when it comes to our animal community. So, that's it for my current year, before I got into my goals for next year, I just wanted to ask if there are any questions for what's been happening for the first year?
I don't think so, looks, I mean, it looks like you have a pretty busy month.
Is there anything else that you need to keep performing?
Well, these are, so my goals for next year are, one of them being is designing a more efficient documenting and filing system, there is software out there, but, you know, I don't know if there's just me, if that, if there, I don't know how much it costs, I know that a lot of, there's some kind of software that other towns use, that animal control officers, at my last in-person class that I did, it's a system that everybody can access, the town clerk, the animal control officer, the police officers, and we'll go into any notes that have been made, and basically, anyone can access those notes, and I don't know much about the program, but I know that some of the bigger towns have that. So, if someone's coming in to pay their, pay something like their excise tax or something like that, and they had gotten a fine with animal control that hadn't been paid, that would be a note that was made. It might not be the best example, but it's that type of, type of system where, you know, like one-stop shopping, you know, so if someone had some questions, the other person could look up and see what was going on. That, that might be a fantasy, but maybe, maybe...
We'll look at the crisis.
Jerry, do you know anything about that?
I was just thinking, I wonder if there's some way I can get her onto our system where she'd have access to, you're talking about if you wanna make reports and stuff?
Yeah.
Because...
Yeah.
Do ECOs have access to IMC?
I don't know.
In some of the bigger towns, they, I believe they do.
Certain accesses.
It, I don't know if it's limited access, but in the bigger towns where the animal control departments are, you know, large and well-funded, you know, they, they have a lot, they have a lot. I will say that when I go to my classes and, and you meet everybody, you meet people from the big towns, like I said, who have the most amazing funding, they have everything you could ever wish for as animal control, and then you meet people from very, very rural towns who don't even have a paperclip to their name, and there's definitely a sense of pride for what we've accomplished here in Warren, because we, we have a good system here, I mean, there are other animal control officers who, like I said, don't have anything. And I say, I say, yeah, I have, you know, my catch poles and my chip scanner, which I would consider to be basic equipment, but there are some towns that don't provide that, and that, that's unfortunate, because that's not helping the community at all. So, I personally think we're doing pretty good. So, as I was saying, one of my goals for next year is to have a more efficient documenting system and filing system. One thing that I've been doing with kennel inspections is every time I go out, there's a second page that you can fill out, which on the first page it says if there's any concerns or anything that the person needs to follow up on, write on page two, but I write on page two for every single visit, and I document what I saw, you know, information about the animals that might be pertinent, and if there was any, ever any question, the town clerk keeps those on file, and, you know, someone could go and look, you know, if a concern came up and one of you had to go, or the town administrator had to go, and find out what was going on, who I gave a kennel license to, they would be able to see, you know, what I saw, why I gave them my kennel license in the back, that, you know, I felt that it was appropriate. So, I'm just hoping to just be super efficient and super organized moving forward, it's been a little bit overwhelming, because there was really no walking, it was just straight, right into the position, just running, you know, everything was so fast-paced and moving. So, now that I am definitely a lot more comfortable with how things go, I feel like this is definitely something that I can work on. Regarding the emergency response team, they can meet with us at the high school, they have a presentation, they could show us how they perform this emergency response service, what they provide, where they would put their things, they could, they could set up a whole entire plan for us, we could even do a drill with them if they ever, if we ever wanted to. And, you know, so you, we could do that presentation at the high school without actually signing a contract, just to get more information, and when we met, we talked about doing it during the summer, you know... And when we met, we talked about doing it during the summer, you know, since school would be out and it would be a little bit more easier to hold a, a whole, hold a meeting there or possibly a drill if we decided to do that as well. So that's definitely a meeting that I would like to take place. Whether or not we sign the contract with them, you know, that's, that's a different discussion, but I would like to at least have a meeting.
I think it's a good idea. You know, set something up. Something that both the chiefs should be involved with, so they're familiar with it too, is a, a drill like that to identify how we're going to handle the animals and stuff and how, what the roles are going to be for that. Because again, it's far too often that the animals are forgotten or neglected because we're so focused on people and the prioritization of life. And human life is always going to take priority. And then we also have to make sure we get to deal with the animals because, just like Tammy's saying, you know, some people won't leave without their dog. If they can't bring their cat with them, I'm staying in my house. I ain't leaving. And that's something we don't want people to have as a dilemma or not, you know, a reason for putting themselves in increased danger, you know? Something like this would give residents more comfort knowing I can go here, I can be safe, and my pet's going to be safe too, because I'll be able to make sure they go and I can keep an eye on it. So I think it's a great idea.
Just adding to that, I've seen in some houses that they have like a sign and maybe Chief, Chief Martin can, can help me on this. And it says, "In this house, we have two dogs, a cat and fish," you know, "in case of a, of a fire or something."
We have those. They're in the town clerk's office.
That will be, you know, a way of promoting you.
And it has my phone number on it.
And everything. That's what I'm trying to say, that we can, you know, share those in, in our, you know, like I would like to have one, definitely.
Go to the town clerk's office? They're right there. I also dropped.
That's what I wanted to get.
I also dropped some off at the post office because I, I'm going to get in contact with Second Chance to try to book our, um, next, you have to book early, uh, next year's vaccine clinic. We've been using VCA Wickabog in the past and they've been great, but with pandemic, they just haven't been able to provide those services. And I don't like the fact that this past year, a lot of other towns were offering the vaccine clinics and we were not able to. So with the, with the funding that, you know, we would have used to help with for the vaccine clinic, the town clerk wants to make sure that it went to something animal-related and she purchased the emergency stickers. You know, how many pets I have, you know, firefighter, police rescue. And it says, "If you have these animals, please contact Warren Animal Control." I, I've dropped them off at the post office and so many people who liked them, there was one person who was stopping in town who, at the post office, did not live in town. And they were like, "Ooh, I want one of these," as I was dropping them off. But they don't live in town. And it says, "If you get my animal, to please call Warren Animal Control." And I was like, "Oh, no." But, um, you know, I, I, I definitely, I, I mean, again, personally, I feel like we're doing, we're doing good. We're doing good. The last thing that is a goal, so I have three goals for next year. One of them is again, establishing a more efficient documenting and filing system. The second one is to schedule that meeting with the emergency response team. And the third one is to, you know, just continue on, I, every year I have to complete continuing education and, you know, I want to make sure that I'm not just taking any class just for the sake of getting those mandatory numbers. I want to make sure that they're relevant to our community. One of the, one of the continuing education courses that I've seen pop up a little bit here and there is regarding wildlife. ACOs don't typically deal with wildlife. I, we're really just domestic animals. But because we live where we live, wildlife is something that frequently comes up. And so I definitely want to make sure that I'm more familiar and competent in answering people's questions and where to direct them, like most of wildlife.
Do you have anything else?
Nope. That's it. That's my, my year in review and my goals for the upcoming year.
Richard?
No.
No, sir. Very happy with you.
Okay. So one thing I recommend is when I was on FEMA, okay, I noticed FEMA has free online courses. They have the online courses for anybody to take. Law enforcement has to take certain ones. Fire has to take certain FEMA courses. There's some for town administrators and managers that need to know, like incident command system. So I was working on that. One of the things I noticed is they were actually FEMA courses for animal control officers on there. And one of the things were how to deal with the animals in a natural disaster or an event. And I think that's something, and they're only like an hour and a half courses, and they give you credit, federal credits. I don't know if they would count towards your credits with the state and your continuing education.
The state provides similar, similar training.
So, but that's an option too, to look at. There's courses out there for that too. Do you have any?
No, good.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Mikowski with the Board of Health.
How you doing?
Good. We've been keeping the officer, control, or, uh, control officer, the animal control officer, with bunches of calls with chickens and roosters.
Yeah.
It is getting to be a big to-do with those also.
Yeah.
Everything from cages to pens to how much room should they have to roam in? It gets pretty complicated.
Yes.
There will be, we should figure out some way to handle those kinds of situations as they come along, including, you know, looking at a nuisance because they are just clucking away and keeping people at work, you know, during the night. They want to sleep during the day, but these roosters just don't know what time it is.
Well, roosters, it's a myth that they all like crow in the morning and during the sunrise. Roosters crow all day and all night. And there's different reasons for that. They're protectors of the, um, the flock, the hens. So if they see a predator, they'll start calling out to let everybody know that it is danger. And there's many other things that they'll call off. If you have multiple roosters, they'll actually go back and forth. One goes off and then the next one wants to go off being louder. And it's almost like they have an argument. So there's multiple things that will set roosters off. And they can be quite distracting and annoying. I think sometimes people get chickens. And I know we've had it. We've hatched our own hens with the incubators. And I've had one where we got, what, seven or eight roosters out of one?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven out of 12.
Eleven, 11 roosters out of 12 that were hatched. So people need to understand that's a possibility if you're hatching your own, that that could happen. And it's not good to have roosters all together. They'll eventually fight. They'll kill each other because it's, they want to be the top rooster. And they can become dangerous at times too, because spurs on their legs. I know I've gotten hit in the back of the leg and it tore a pair, pair of jeans because the spurs will actually cut right through and a small child can get injured pretty bad by a rooster. So they, they can be dangerous at times too. So there's an importance of keeping the rooster population at bay. Hens, safe, generally quiet. At night they go in, they're quiet. Not an issue. I don't have an issue with hens, but roosters, I agree. Probably something for a bylaw needs to be done because right now we don't have anything giving us the authority to address this. It is an issue. I know, being Tammy's husband, I hear all the rooster calls that she gets all the time. And it takes quite a bit of her time. And she is very busy with animal control. She does a great job with it. She's constantly working with it. But the roosters, I know some people complain because when you have them in the, when you have them within the town and, you know, the more populated areas, they can become very loud and cause issues for residents. In the rural district, doesn't really matter because they're in the woods, you know, you're not really, nobody's really hearing them. But people should have some sort of way of dealing with roosters. Our way is we eat them. So, you know, it's a chicken. And it's a thinner chicken. They're more athletic, but we process them and we, we eat the roosters. That's farm life. If that's not what somebody wants to do, they got to understand that roosters can become a very big distraction to neighbors. So I agree with you. We're going to have to work on something here and figure out what to do. It's just, how do we do it? And I believe it really falls under the Board of Health's purview to do that, unless you're going to be doing a bylaw and then it would have to come up in a special or an annual town meeting.
It's very possible, Mr. Chairman, that it comes down between a bylaw or a regulation?
Well, I think you have more, more, um, more teeth to say with a bylaw. It's voted on by the public, it's supported by the residents because you're going to have residents that are absolutely against anything regulating chickens because they want to have their chickens. I know a lot of people, I see chickens on our roads all the time. And chickens are generally harmless. They're, they're not really an issue. The roosters are what can become a problem and can become dangerous. But you never know what you got when you got this little tiny chick and they tell you they think it's a hen, but you don't really know until it starts getting older and then it matures and then you realize you got a rooster. You know, so if people are buying them from these farm stores, it's not an exact science what you might get. You might think you're buying hens and you might have a few roosters in there. I know it happens to us all the time when we get new blood within our, our flock. We tend to get a new rooster within that. But again, we have means to deal with them.
I believe some towns do something like, if it turns out you have, had a rooster. I was actually doing research on, uh, the Board of Health meeting yesterday entailed two residents in town who were involved in the other document that you were provided, which is my incident report to the responses of these roosters, the, the resident owns two roosters. The, the other, the other residents feel like it's affecting their mental health and I, I, I believe also physical health because of their mental. And they've continued to reach out to me and you can see how many times I've responded and how many times I've been made aware of the situation. I have been out three times. My conclusion was that I did not believe that the birds were being kept inhumanely. I felt like it was adequate within, within the law. I had no, no concerns. But it's very difficult for someone when they're reaching out for help and I'm telling them there's nothing I can do. If we had a regulation or a bylaw in place that said that they, you know, can't have two roosters or they can't have one rooster, no rooster, at least I would have an answer and say, "This, this is what it is," versus me just saying, "I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do." I think that having some, I'm not really sure what entails a bylaw, what entails a regulation, but I believe something in place would benefit, you know, all residents in town. It would benefit the animals because these things are put in place to protect the animals. And it'd also protect the owner because the owner can say, "I'm full within my right to do what I'm doing" because it is, it's, you know, granted within our bylaws regulations. It'd also make my life a lot easier because it would be more clear-cut. You know, right now, uh, in term, right now, the only situation that I can deal with, with this person is investigating possible animal cruelty. And animal cruelty is very specific. And that's something that's been difficult to adjust to because even when it comes to dogs and cats, there are situations where my personal opinion of how I think animals should be kept, you know, it's, it's not being met with this person. But it has to be very strict criteria for it to be considered, you know, animal abuse or neglect. So if we have, typically the, the state likes to leave things more open and somewhat vague because then they allow the town to pursue their own discretion, what they want to do. So we don't have anything. So if we had something, I really think, I don't, I don't want people to feel like, you know, they can't, they can't farm and, you know, because that's one of the big reasons people move here is, is because, you know, in some places you can't even have chickens at all. You know, we don't want to lose that, that rural, you know, farming mindset. We just need to make sure that we're, you can't keep everybody happy, but if, if we could try to create something that the majority of people agree on, that would be good.
Got to be a little more responsible with it.
Mr. Chairman, the Board of Health is chasing everything and there is a lot out there. Everything from coops, whether or not it's a coop, whether it's an old dog pen. Coops seem to be somewhere out there feasible because it sort of muffles any kind of roosters or chickens that get in here. You can put lights in. It's a wide-open conversation. We are working at the best we can.
Yeah. And, you know, again, I think with your, with the ACO's jurisdiction on that, I think all they need is shelter that's adequate for them. Is that right?
It depends on the, if we're talking about livestock, it depends on the type of livestock. For example, cows. You know, if you have, if someone has dairy cows, they're, they're going to be very well-kept. If someone's doing meat cows, all they need is shade and that could be a tree. So, so like meat cows, so chickens are, I, I can't think of anything with, with a, with a chicken. I mean, I have, I have more experience discussing what a cow needs than, than a chicken in terms of criteria. It's, it's difficult, but I know that in, from our meeting yesterday, some of the research, some towns do require certain structures. They have to be a certain size. I don't know if we, if the townspeople want to go that far into depth with, you know, I think, I think a joke was made about me being out there with a measuring tape.
Send the building commissioner out here to make sure it's proper dimensions.
There are some, there are some towns that actually have, you need two acres or three acres or five acres per chicken. Or, or is it per chicken or for a group of chickens? What amount of chickens do you have?
I've seen it for chickens and I've seen it for goats too.
Okay.
Yeah, horses.
Where, where is five acres or are they the three one?
I'm not sure. I know that was brought up in the meeting last night. I believe, I believe she said that where was five. It seems a lot for.
That seems excessive for chickens because I know even in the city limits, they, they've been laxing that more because chickens really don't need a whole lot of space, you know? They're fairly small, you know, they, I think.
I'm sure it's mostly just to keep them out of the village and the town.
By 15 feet, but we free-range them during the day, so.
Sir, I think it has, once we go into that issue, I think we have to look at density of the population because, you know, if you're, you know, the, the, in a very dense area, you have a rooster is going to bother neighbors around.
I think it would be better to, to identify whether it's the rural district like we do already versus saying, okay, you need to have this amount of land, because really you don't need a lot of land for chickens. You know, I would understand if it was a chicken farm and you wanted to raise 3,000 or 4,000 chickens on an acre of land. Yeah, it's not. You can't do that. But if it's in the rural or residential district or commercial district, you know, that would be more applicable because that's. because that's kind of what we do now already with a lot of our bylaws. But we're gonna have to look at how to propose it. And if you guys, the House, take a lead on that for, you know, presenting something, I'm sure we would mind looking into it with you and helping out.
Thank you. It's on our plate and it's at the top of our pile.
I know you've been getting a lot of complaints and the ACO's been getting a lot of complaints. I know we've been getting some complaints in here. And it all stems on roosters or chickens that are in the road.
Is it mostly just the one rooster that we have the report on or is there other roosters in town that people are complaining to?
There's other roosters.
There's another one on my report here where a resident had just planted, he was so frustrated, he had just planted a, some corn and, you know, he got some seeds and, for him, it really wasn't about necessarily the money, it was the principle of the matter. He said that a few houses down, they used to have a whole flock and they let them free range, but they were like on the roadways and he said over time, all of them got picked off and now there's just the rooster. And this rooster is just, just not behaving very nicely. And he planted, he planted his seeds, he was hoping to get some crops started, you know, have a good summer and, you know, the rooster came and ate everything. Like, you know, just went and, and he caught the rooster doing it. He was extremely angry, you know, because again, it wasn't necessarily about the financial aspect, although right now times are tough and I'm sure that's something that he did cross his mind as well. It was the principle of the matter that, you know, this is someone else's bird who just came and ate, you know, he took time to plant everything and now it's all destroyed because this rooster was just looking for a happy meal and a good time, you know? So, that, that happened as well. And with that, with that, you know, he and I just had a conversation and, you know, we talked about, well, the fact of, you know, the hens got picked up. The rooster might be getting picked up soon if we wanna be honest and a little blunt. But it's, it's difficult because free ranging, when the roosters or, and even chickens, even hens, when they leave their property and they go, go onto someone else's property, I don't, I can't really picture myself with my neck catching a bunch of chickens. I don't wanna do that. I hope people, I hope people just try to do their best and try to contain their chickens to their yard. So, it's, it's a very huge undertaking. It's a huge undertaking where we have to keep these concerns in mind while also trying to protect people's freedoms.
We have found that the, we have sent one of our people out there with a meter to measure the amount of noise. The ambient noise is at a number called sixty-five dB. So anything above that is then called either a nuisance or louder than regular noise. The roosters and the chickens come in at forty-five dB, way below that ambient noise threshold. So you can't chase this problem with a noise, but it's just annoying to the person that's trying to sleep.
Yeah, it's, it's very distinctive having that. We have them outside our window and I know, and I think they sense when my alarm clock goes off because as soon as my alarm clock goes off, I hear the roosters. And I'm like.
Oh, you wake up a rooster.
I'm like, gotta stock up that freezer again. But, you know, it's life in the country.
Again, we are looking for the best for everybody.
Yeah, and, you know, if you guys are working on something, I think a bylaw would be the best route to go. You know, because then it gives the residents a say and it allows more enforcement of it, I believe, so. And I know there was a discussion of being a right to farm community too at one point. I believe there's a vote on that a while back and it was voted down because people.
Because bylaws would have had to be put in place and I don't, I think people are concerned about restrictions. You know, they're concerned if they vote in a restriction here, it's just gonna increase into something even worse. And right now, we allow agricultural practices in all districts, there's no limitations. So we are kind of like, we're definitely an agricultural community, but we, we could become a right to farm community, which would benefit, again, benefit, I think, everybody, but then also if someone buys a home here in town, the Realtor, from my understanding, the Realtor legally must disclose that we are a right to farm community and provide a copy or access to a copy of our bylaws so the person can see what is allowed in town and if this is decision, do they really wanna buy a home in here? Versus someone right now could buy a home in the village district and wake up tomorrow with forty roosters right next to their yard from their, from their neighbor, so.
Okay, so we've got some work to do. But right now, we have nothing. Again, people that have concerns with these roosters, we will work on addressing in the future, but we have nothing that says people can't have these at this point in time. So we're kind of limited what we can do. Maybe give them a card, whoever, give them a card to a good butcher or something. I hate to say it, but there's barely no other reason to have a rooster. Unless you're breeding, which is hard to do when you only have one chicken and it's a rooster. So, all right, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
No.
No.
Do you have anything else here? Anything from the public? Anybody from the room?
Nope.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Very good report.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Okay, contracts for highway.
All right, so I'll make a motion to go into contract with Palmer Paving Corporation for bituminous concrete to be picked up.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into a contract with Palmer Paving Corporation for hard pack delivered to the town of Warren.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to go into a contract with Palmer Paving Corporation for bituminous concrete in place.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to go into a contract with Allstate Construction Inc. for CA2 FDR.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, line item transfers.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. For the line item transfers, we have a few different requests tonight. I just wanted to update you on the progress from when we last met. The finance committee had met this Tuesday and voted on all of the requests that were presented in front of them. And all of the line item transfer requests that were submitted were passed by the finance committee and then I subsequently submitted them to, to the accountant except for three requests that were not approved at this time. And the requests were from the Board of Selectment in the amount of thirty thousand seventy-five dollars for town council fees. The finance committee wants to have more input on that. They had limited members there. They wanna have more input from their other members. So they will be having another meeting on the twenty-eighth of this month to, to have members present to talk more about town council fees. With regards to the Board of Selectment's request for supplies, they approved up to a thousand dollars additional. The original request was for twenty-eight eighty-nine. They feel as though that a thousand dollars would be enough to get us to July one. So that is what they approved. With regards to the request from the council on aging in the amount of one thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars, they approved one thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. And that was for drain, the drain expense only. For, there was a clog at the senior center a few weeks ago that needed to be handled and dealt with. That clog required the COA director to contract with a plumbing service and those were the costs that were incurred for that service. The bumper blocks for two hundred and forty dollars was not approved by the finance committee. They will need additional supporting documentation on that expense. They felt as though that when line item transfers come up, these are for items that may be of an emergency purpose of nature. So they're gonna need some additional documentation for that. I did respond to them and say that there was some rebars that were coming out of the bumper blocks that were causing the issue for some safety concerns. So I'm hoping that that can get passed on the twenty-eighth.
Those, those were in bad shape. I had seen that a couple of months ago.
So, the finance committee is gonna have another meeting on the twenty-eighth of this month. It's not something that was normally they were planning to do. I asked them to do it because we're really up against the wall with the end of the fiscal year for this stuff. And they were very clear as in terms of, you know, if there is no money in a certain line item, that we cannot spend any more money for that. And they are, they are a hundred percent correct when it comes to that. So, we're hopeful that on the twenty-eighth, we can, we can get these, these things taken care of. For what's before you this evening, tonight, for line item transfers. These transfers actually, most of them have been, all of them have been approved by the finance committee already. They just weren't heard before this body because of, there needed to be an adjustment made with the Board of Health in order for them to get their funds that they need to take care of the landfill issue, the maintenance at the landfill. And we were able to do that. We were not able to transfer money from the omnibus to a, to an enterprise fund, but we are able to transfer within the enterprise fund to make that happen. And so, after reviewing the line item expenses in the enterprise fund, identified some areas in which there are going to be a surplus and which we felt comfortable after speaking with Brianna that there's gonna be room in there to have these done. So these line item transfer requests that you see are counts in the enterprise fund that will have a surplus that will be used for the maintenance of that landfill prior to the new landfill operator coming on, or the same landfill operators coming on on July one. Just continue on with a new contract.
Correct.
Correct. So, this will take care of that maintenance and clear up that issue with that. And then also, well, the highway department also has one before you. One thing that we're gonna be seeing, and I know I've spoken to Chief Mallett and Chief Lavoy, fuel expenses is going unbelievable. It's something that, you know, even we anticipated it to be high, we didn't anticipate it to be this high. And it's only dictating that it may continue to go even higher by the end of the summer. So, we're hopeful that we'll see some type of reprieve, you know, maybe in the fall or in the winter. But as of right now, we're dealing with very high costs and the highway department has this request in front of them. The finance committee was aware of that and they did approve that as well. So these are the requests that are before you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, Matt?
No.
No, sir.
So you wanna make motions?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Board of Health of two thousand dollars from the landfill supplies account to the landfill operations account.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to accept the transfer for the Board of Health of fifteen hundred dollars from the monitor wells account to the landfill operations account.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfer for the Board of Health for five thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents from the leach aid account to the landfill operations account.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to accept the transfer for the highway department of thirty-five hundred dollars from the maintenance, machine maintenance account to the general highway account.
Second.
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. President, I should go ahead and ask you something. Okay. Now we're on to the police and fire reports. Did you guys want to address them or?
Whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Well, you guys might as well present your reports.
Okay.
Come on down.
I'm gonna ask you to do mine because I didn't have a chance to swing to the station to grab it, so.
Oh, I am fit. Drag it out, please, chief.
Here you go.
In May, we answered sixteen hundred eighty-eight calls for service. Cloud log, toll laws ending in an R-S. They had sixty-three incident reports there, oh. Nine summoner arrests, one more arrest, three on view arrests. Motor vehicle stops, you'll see, were up, way up. That's because we had the governor's highway safety grant. We had extra patrols. So they had two hundred and thirty-three motor vehicle stops with a hundred and eight motor vehicle citations. During the month, our, you know, notice the officers are now wearing body cameras. Our body camera program went live with Motorola at the beginning of the month. We also received the funds for one of the AV grants that we won. Money came in and we purchased it and it only took a week to come in. So within a week, we had a new AV in our cruisers.
Very good.
I attended our mass chiefs. There's still a lot of questions around police reform and Post, the new Post committee. So we meet very often with all the chiefs in the state. This, this month, we, all the chiefs met with the executive director of Post who kinda answered some questions that we had, not all of them. But we went with them. Officer Mike Shea graduated from the Boylston Academy. Officer O'Flaw and I attended the graduation ceremony in St. John's in Worcester. Was it Shrewsbury?
Shrewsbury?
Shrewsbury. And at the end of the month, I spent a lot of time in the schools. Twenty eighth of a step-up day where the incoming seventh graders went up to Quaylog. Chief Lavoy and I went up to introduce ourselves to the seventh graders. Everyone knows, there was an event that happened in Texas, so I spent a lot. Everyone knows there was an event that happened in Texas, so I spent a lot of time that week in every school, made sure, myself and the officers, made our presence in the schools. We walked around, spent a lot of time at the elementary school, and I spent actually a lot of time at the seventh day. Those kids up there were really worried. They had a lot of questions coming. I think I was up there over an hour just answering questions they had. So, and I continue my Hi-Fi Friday. Kids like that at the elementary school. And then finally, on the twenty-ninth, the town had the memorial day parade. Hopefully next year, we have a better turnout from my department. This year was low. We got kind of told late what was going on, and people already had plans. So next year, we will have a better, out with my people at the parade.
Very good. Thank you very much. Chief?
In terms of fire department for May, we had total of twenty-five fire calls. They ranged in different categories from activated alarms, motor vehicle accidents, medical assists, structured fires, vehicle fires, illegal burns, investigations, gas emergencies, brush fires, mutual aid, and some calls ended up being false alarms or canceled while in route, which is pretty standard for us. In terms of ambulance responses, we always stay very, very busy on the ambulance. Fifty-six calls in May. Twelve ALS intercepts were acquired. Right now, we're above our call volume in terms, again, once again, from where we are at this point, from where we were last year. So we're seeing that continual uptick in call volume, which is, just seems to be continuing, and that's kind of across the board for any community right now. It happens quite a bit. We continued with inspections. We're seeing a lot more properties transferred lately, so we're seeing an uptick in the smoke, the smoke and carbon dioxide inspections that we do, which is never a bad thing to see sales happening in town, so that's a good thing. We are required to go in and do a inspection prior to any transfer of property in the community. We had one propane tank. In terms of activities, we had quite an extensive month worth of training. We have to, every three years, we have to recertify our firefighter fighters as first responders. These are not the EMTs. These are called firefighters, first responders. They're not certified to the EMT level, but they're required by law to be first responders. Every three years, we have to recertify them with a refresher course. It's a pretty lengthy course. It requires usually anywhere from three to four to five nights, depending on how many hours they get in while they're doing that. So that makes sure that they can work seamlessly with us. When I say us, I mean, you know, on the EMS side of things, if we ask them to get us backboards and stretchers, and we have to extricate people from a house or something, the firefighters are also trained to, you know, jump into that role and be able to help the EMTs as well. So they completed that. It's a long, it lasts, usually we train twice a month. That was four or five trainings that we did for that, so that was a little more extensive. It covers everything from CPR, first aid, ambulance operations, general patient care. We also did an EMS training, which every once in a while, the Office of Emergency Medical Services, OEMS, which covers everything we do EMS-wise. Any other municipalities that run ambulances, they oversee our license, everything, all of our operations, our protocols. They did a protocol update, which we're required to have all of our staff. Anytime they change medication that you can give, or a dose, or any type of small change to the protocols that Massachusetts follows, we have to train our people within a certain amount of time to make sure they're up to speed with that training. Terms of the budget, we did, you know, a couple of line item transfers, which Jim addressed there towards most of the issues we saw, where we had an employee that was out on injury, so we had to cover with overtime and part-time help in order to supplement and keep the ambulance on the road. Also, we saw the increase with the fuel cost. That's been huge, especially this last month. I mean, it's still tallying as we speak, and it's, we have never paid fuel prices anywhere within that, within that universe of where they are right now, between the fire trucks and the, and the ambulance. We participated in the memorial day parade, several different programs they had in the schools. They had a recent recital that we were up there for. It was very well attended, much more well attended than we thought. We actually had to make sure everybody was away from the emergency exits and do all that, because there's a lot more people there than we thought there were, there was going to be. One side note, for June, not May, but myself and Chief Mallett are attending a three-day course on active shooter situations and updates and everything coming at the last week of June. So we'll be together for that, out in Leominster for that, at the emergency operations center up there. So trying to stay ahead of some things and look at what's, you know, take a good look at what's going on in the world here, and if there's anything we can bring back, and, you know, see if we can, adjust here, make some improvements. And other than that, Memorial Day Parade was, was pretty well attended. I thought it was pretty good, so it was nice to have everybody, you know, everybody come out for that. That's pretty much all I have.
Nice to have the Westport field join us, too.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was very nice to get them into it.
Yep, absolutely. I apologize. That was nice of them, and I got some nice comments. It was nice to see the two towns working together and everything, so that kind of made a, made a little bit, a little bit more special, so that was nice.
A bunch of great guys over there.
And we should be seeing the new ambulance coming in, possibly July, if not August, so we are working on that. It's, it's on the assembly line as we speak, so we are, we are still, still plugging away at that one, but we're hoping to see it sooner than later. We're setting up some trainings in advance so that we can, it's got some different equipment on it that we, much more state-of-the-art as to what we have right now, so we're going to make sure the members have training prior to it coming in. So things are looking good there, and we're good to go.
Very good. Any status on the radios?
Yep, so we're still working through that. To be honest, the negotiations between the towers have been a little more extensive than we were hoping for. Each one of them is its own vendor, so it's not like we're dealing with all of the Walmarts of the towers. Each one of them, it's own independent. They can charge different prices. They can charge for structural analysis. It all depends on what the company has in their bylaws and whatnot to do. So we're still working our way through that process. I, I think we'll still be online for that November goal. We're trying to get those numbers in so that we can address those in the budget for the upcoming special town meeting come, you know, whenever we have that in the fall. But they're running into things that are just in, you know, you can't anticipate. I mean, one of the towers has an Osprey nest on it, and that has become something to work through. So, you know, so all these little things that, you know, all these little things you don't anticipate, you know, running into, you run into. You've got to deal with wildlife issues. You've got to deal with space on there. You've got to deal with wind and weight and everything like that. So that's why the structural analysis come into play. That's why the, you know, the pictures, they send drones up and down, so they, you really got to, you got to really be careful and make sure everything is done correctly. So we, everything is, all three towers are in process right now. We're just waiting for the end result and to get the, to get the final assessments and see what it's going to cost us monthly in the maintenance and everything like that on top of it. So we will get those numbers to you as quickly as they get them to us.
Okay, very good. Did you guys have any thoughts?
I think all the equipment, though, is on order.
All the equipment is on order, yep. That is, as far as I know, we have to, we have certain steps that we have to pay for as this goes, but ninety percent of the equipment at this point has been ordered by the company, so everything will come in on time. So once the contracts are in place and we have the lease agreements, they should be able to get up there and start climbing and doing their thing. And then we'll go into testing after that and make sure everything's working correctly. So, you know, I, I was, we were talking with Jim the other day. The ultimate goal here is that if we do get the last assessment grant, you know, we've been very lucky. We've gotten two assessment grants from Rutland, which basically means we haven't paid for their services for a couple of years, which is fantastic. If we get a third one, we're eligible for up to five, five years worth of assessments. If we get a third assessment, our goal is to try to take and redirect that money. The first two, we redirected to this project. The last one, we would redirect for actual tangible radios, mobiles and, and portables and stuff. And that would be the last piece of the puzzle, and hopefully, once that's done, if that were to be approved, and we would get the grant, and the town would allow us to use it for that cost, we would hopefully look at an entire package, complete and good for about ten years before upgrades were required and everything. State-of-the-art equipment, radios, and we should be looking pretty good.
Okay. So you're aware, I did see, I don't know if you've seen it on the FEMA training, there's actually a course on there about radios and making them, you know, municipal and federal compliant.
Yep.
And how to obtain grants for purchasing them.
There's a lot of stuff that happens with radios. The big, the big thing is what they call P-25 capable, you know, and that's become a huge thing. And as that starts to spread around, we're going to see grants available and stuff, so that's, that's a lot of stuff that's over my head and technical, but, you know, there's a lot of stuff with radio. Unfortunately, radios are, you know, it's funny, because you go to the police academy, go to the fire academy, radios and, and radio etiquette and dealing with radios is almost not even taught in, in these courses anymore. And if you think about it, it's one of the biggest components that we use every day. I mean, I talk of the radio every single day for multiple reasons, you know, throughout the day, as do the police officers and stuff, yet they don't even teach that stuff in, in the academies and stuff. You know, there really is just a huge amount of stuff that goes into those radios, and the technology out there is amazing. And when you sit in a, in a jurisdiction like ours, where you're dealing with VHF, you know, radios, you're dealing with UHF radios, you're dealing with eight hundred of the state police, everybody has their own little niche, and trying to talk amongst each other has been one of the biggest difficulties, especially when it comes to active shooters, situations and scenarios and, and planning, because, you know, once everyone gets there, no one can talk to each other, you know? So, you know, so that's how we have to figure out how to, how to work around that. And there are ways that we are planning on, you know, whether it be a dual band or a tri-band radio, where you can switch to different types of frequencies and use it to talk to multiple agencies, you know? So there's a lot of things, we have ways to patch different things together. We can take a VHF, I'm on the District Seven comm team here, it's a special team within our district, and we respond and we take communities that, you know, they could be from Connecticut and have this radio, and be from Millville, Millbury, or Warren and have this radio, and we can actually have special devices in our trucks, and we can actually take that radio and take this radio and pair them together, and then everyone can talk, even though they're on different channels. So there's things and workarounds around that, as long as you know what you're doing and how to get that done. But those are kind of all things that we're, we've been talking about, actually, in the last, just the last couple of days, and I'm sure we'll talk about it more after we take this class, about working better with some of the other agencies that we'll be seeing. You know, God forbid, we actually had an incident where we had a multi-agency, you know, jurisdiction issue or something, whether it be a mass casualty, you know, from a rollover of a bus or something on the Mass Pike, or, you know, or, you know, God forbid, something, something that would require a lot of resources to come together for, for, you know, and, and really be committed for a while, and we'd have to figure out a way to talk amongst each other. There are plans in place for that, so.
Very good. I know they eliminated ten codes in most areas.
Yep.
I know we eliminated ten codes, and it's all plain speech.
And that's, that's been an improvement, because, you know, the codes, everything got away from the codes, because it was, it was more confusing than some things, you know, in some, in some ways, they, they just recommend talking plainly on there. But you still got to be very careful of what you say, you know? I mean, you have to keep in mind that we live in a world where, you know, a vast majority of our population have scanners.
Everybody's listening.
Yeah, you say the wrong thing, or say something that you shouldn't have said, you don't have that take back. I mean, there's just no, people are going to flood the area, or they're going to, or they're going to start on social media, and so trying to keep those things, that's why it's so important to have tactical channels where they're not repeated. People, they don't go out over there. And not that we're trying to hide information, it's just that we're trying to keep sensitive information, you know, from getting out there, so there's not, no misinformation is spreading.
Very, very good. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
Amazing, what you do, guys. Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll fill you in more on that class once that's done, so.
Any questions, Jim?
No.
Anybody from the public? Joe?
Joe Conrad, resident. It should be noted that the warrant part department was called to the turnpike recently for an accident where the Cadillac went off the road and I believe the driver was killed in that accident. They dedicated three hours of their time to extricate people and maintain the highest professional quality of the department. They should be commended, if you put it that way. Dedication.
And this is something that you guys do all the time, and you see things that people shouldn't see.
It's not a, it's not a call, I mean, I was the first person on that scene, and, and, you know, that's not a call that you, you want to respond to. It's very, it doesn't happen very often, thank goodness, but, you know, the, the last thing that, you know, any of us want to do is that when you can't do anything, that's the hardest call there is, you know? That's the toughest one to take, is the one where you can't, you know, you can't do anything. And, you know, so some of those calls are, you know, are very tough for the first responders, for families, obviously, especially the families and the victims, but, you know, there's a lot of other things that come out. We have to make sure things are done correctly and protocols are followed, so that, you know, everything is documented and investigated correctly before we can really even, even assist in that. But, you know, Mass Pike is a, is a tough, is a tough one there, you know? It's, it's either really, it's either not bad, or it's really bad, you know? There's really no in-between there a lot of times, so, you know, so that's its own little animal, but, you know, yeah, my hat's off to the crews that, you know, they, they deal with those things as best they can, and, you know, if they have trouble with a call like that or something, there's, there's things we can do to help them out, too. That's a good thing. Those things have changed a lot. We have resources between the two of us, between the state, so many different teams out there, that we don't ignore members' problems anymore with, you know, issues.
My follow-up question on that was, do we have?
Yep, absolutely.
Counselors available that guys can talk to, and they got their numbers that they can call them whenever they need to?
Yep.
Because sometimes those, those images haunt us most when we're trying to go to sleep.
Yep, no, you're absolutely right. The PTSD side of things, the mental health side of things, and public safety have changed tremendously, which is good. There's no more stigma about it, or there's very little, when people need assistance, the assistance's there, and nobody's judged for it, you know? They realize that there's been way too many first responders that unfortunately have hurt themselves, or killed themselves, or, or their families have been altered, or they've been divorced. The divorce rate's huge, so, you know, that's starting to go away. There's, there's resources in place where things are getting better, the numbers are getting better, where people are receiving the care they need to be able to deal with some of those, those bad calls, unfortunately.
Okay. Can you guys have all that available?
Yep.
You making sure?
Yeah, they come onto us, too.
They'll come, they'll come right onsite. They'll do what they call a critical incident stress debriefing. I've been to several of them in my career, and they'll sit with every single person. They go around the room, they ask what the role of the person was, they tell exactly what it is. It allows everyone to see the other person's perspective, what they saw, how they helped, what they did, what they, you know, something if they thought something went wrong or went good, and, you know, so it allows that talk to happen, to get that stress start to move and that conversation start to happen. And then we monitor them afterwards and stuff. So anytime any of our first responders come to us with an issue, you know, and there's also things, there's, there's literally a place that, you know, an academy, what they call an onsite academy, where first, it's only for first responders. It's a place that they can go, they can see counseling, they can, it's a.
In-house.
An in-house place where they can go for a week, two weeks, or more, depending on the situation, if they're having family issues, if they're having PTSD issues. It's specifically for first responders, and it's not too far, it's not too far out of our backyard in Westminster. So, so those are things we never had before for years, and now they're available to us in case anybody needs them, so it's a good.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else, Joe? Thank you for addressing it. Anybody in Zoom have any questions?
No.
All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for everything you guys do, and great job.
Thank you very much. The chief apologizes.
So warrants and bills?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the following warrants. Number 101 payroll, fifty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Number 102 vendor, six hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Number 103 payroll, hundred and two thousand nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Number 104, 104 vendor, thirty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Vellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Make a motion to pay the following bills. WB Mason for a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seven cents. Century Uniform for the custodian, a hundred and ninety-two dollars. Cooley Dickinson Medical Group, a hundred and forty dollars. WB Mason, twenty-three ninety-four. WB Mason, twenty-eighty-eight. KP Law for seventy-six. KP Law for sixty-one. KP Law for a hundred and ninety. KP Law for a thousand twenty-seven and seventy-three cents.
Mr. Joe? Do you have money in that?
Yeah, there's, there's no money to pay the thousand dollar one. We have to take it off.
I will strike my entry of KP Law at a thousand twenty-seven and seventy-three cents. Modern Pest Services for ninety-two. Crystal Rock for sixty-five eighty-five. WB Mason for a hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Another WB Mason for one thirty-seven ninety-seven. What's that? Oh my gosh. WB Mason for a hundred forty-one ninety-six. Servew Locksmith for forty-three ninety-six. Verizon for twenty-five eighty-three. Verizon for a credit of eighty-two cents. Verizon for a hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. National Grid Gas, fourteen hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Comcast Business, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. Shred It, a hundred and eight dollars and seventy-one cents. C2MA Adams Two for nine hundred and three dollars and sixty-one cents. Easy True Value for thirteen ninety-eight. ADT for eight ninety-one. Two for associated building wreckers, uh, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and six hundred and fifty dollars. The Warren Water District, ninety-five hundred seventeen dollars. C2MA Adams Two Streetlights, twelve hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. And then Central Mass Regional Planning, one for thirteen thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And ten thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second? My covered dollar, my covered dollar is up.
Well, for the Central Mass Regional Planning, uh, those are grants, so those, those are, those are already, uh, that's, that's just transferring out of from grant money. But for, for the, um, these associated building records, are they coming from out of the?
Fifty thousand.
The fifty thousand, there's money?
Yeah, that's already allocated.
There's money, there's money left out of there?
Yes. By the time we pay those and we pay the Shred It, we'll still have three hundred dollars left.
Okay.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Deli, Delis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then the minutes for June second, two thousand twenty-two?
You didn't send these out, right?
Yeah, yeah, I did, you corrected them.
Oh, I did?
Mm-hmm, on June ninth.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, the June second, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Deli, Delis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes. So, new business, uh, we have President adding three dead bolts and doorknobs with key, uh, master keys for where?
Okay, so since we're moving all the rooms around, there's a couple of them that don't fit the master keys because they're too skinny of locks. So I had Servew Lock come out, Smith come out, and we'll put, they will be putting dead bolts above the handles, and then that will be keyed in the departments that are getting those new rooms. It's historical room, the archive room, and the parks and rec room downstairs. All the rest of the doors in the building have dead bolts on them, those three do not.
Okay. So, um, did they give us a price?
Yes, it's seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Do we have money for that?
Not this year, probably.
That, we have the fifty thousand that was approved at the special town meeting is available, so we can use that.
But I thought you said we have three hundred left after we paid?
We do have the three hundred left out of the first fifty thousand, this is the second fifty thousand that was just approved.
Okay.
We can use that already?
Yes.
Was it at the special?
At the special town meeting in May.
I thought we had to wait till July first.
Oh, it was the annual town meeting.
No, it was at the special town meeting.
Special town meetings for twenty-two.
It was at the special town meeting, I checked with Tammy, it's good to go.
Okay, awesome. Great.
All right.
So I just wanted your permission to proceed.
I'm good with it. Gotta lock the doors, gotta lock up the archive room.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit?
Of course, yeah.
Good?
Yeah.
Um, did you have any new business?
No, I don't think so.
No, sir, nothing? Well, just my report and stuff.
Well, that's coming up.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned for this report. Okay, um, you know, are you gonna be touching on social media?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So I don't have anything to say on that one then because I'll let you make your statement.
Right.
All right, um, old business?
No new old business.
Old business?
No new old business.
No new old business? Any old business? Karen?
Nope.
Okay, um, Town Administrator Report.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. Uh, I do have a couple different things I wanna update the board on, uh, and the public on, uh, with regards to the happenings around, around town. Uh, I have some great news to report to the board. Um, the town was awarded an EDA grant, um, in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars with the town providing twenty percent of that. So it's a total of a two, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, investment in the town's, uh, master plan and recovery plan. Uh, this was a great effort on, on everybody who, uh, participated in this, uh, all the way, uh, from, from, from internally to CMRPC, um, for, for everybody that really had, uh, a doing in this and from this board, the Board of Selectmen, really taking the initiative to pursue something like this and having the Zoom call, I still remember that Zoom call, it's like the first week that I started and, and everything was going so crazy and, you know, the board took the initiative to really recognize and they wanted to move forward with this. So, with everybody's, uh, getting those orders, uh, it fell in line. Um, with that, we do have, um, the documents that came through, uh, through the, uh, Federal Economic Development Administration. Uh, it's quite extensive, um, of, of documents that we have to, that I have to review. Um, there's a special requirement on compliance for, uh, and a training that's required, um, for, uh, for us to get these funds that I will have to take place in. Uh, there's also a, uh, compliance, uh, and standards, uh, that I have to review as well, uh, to, in terms of, of the awarding of this grant. Um, I did speak with Ms. Beaven today and, uh, she asked me to, um, to sign this because as a town administrator, I, I, I'm taking responsibility of, of, of this, of this project, so if something was to go wrong, the federal government's gonna be looking for me.
I'll root that. We'll make sure that doesn't happen.
So, um, with that being said, um, uh, she was really excited for the town, uh, I thanked her on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and, and the town, uh, on this, and she said that her assistance is, is not finished. She wants to come out, um, as early, she mentioned next week, to do like a, um, a, a welcoming and a, um, an award ceremony. Um, I, I don't know if she's physically gonna be here, if she's gonna be on Zoom, um, but she did mention that in passing, she was boarding a plane, actually, when I spoke to her today. Um, so, you know, she's gonna let me know, um, you know, possibly tomorrow morning, I may have an email up there now, um, with regards to what's going on. So, but she's, uh, she wants to do a welcoming, um, uh, kickoff event, uh, for the award. Um, we did receive correspondence from, uh, I, I received a call from Senator Markey's office today, uh, saying that, uh, that we received this award and that they're, they're really excited, uh, for the town and they're gonna be watching and seeing how the town progresses on this. Um, so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's really an exciting time for Warren to get these funds and, and to see where, where it can lead to and, and what development opportunities are ahead. So it's, it's really gonna be a helpful tool, I think, for the Board of Selectmen, uh, to see how economic development, uh, will, will spin in this community after a full analysis is done. Um, so that, uh, that's something I wanna report on with the EDA, I don't know if anybody had any questions on that.
So my, my understanding with this is, with this, we do our master plan and identify, um, basically the needs and how to spur development within our community. Once we do that, this is initial phase, that opens up other opportunities through the EDA to get additional funding also, um, after we've done this. This is like a, a, a stage and it allows us to get additional federal funds, um, to, to deal with projects. So if we have like wastewater treatment plant that we have to upgrade, this allows us to identify that and get those additional funds to be able to work those projects.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's good.
It opens up a lot of money for us.
Sure. Um, so, uh, moving right along, just on some other housekeeping issues, um, is that we do have, uh, two new postings that, that, that have gone up, um, that are going to be in the process of going up. Karen had posted them to the website as of today, uh, for the police officer, full-time police officer, um, that, that has, is gonna get posted, um, for, um, a new person that we're looking to hire. The chief indicated, uh, that this person is, uh, they're looking to get as many resumes as they can by July first, so if anybody, uh, in town, uh, would like to apply, we encourage you to apply. This will appear also, uh, in all of the newspapers starting next week, um, for, for, for the ad for that. It, it also was brought to my attention this week, unfortunately, uh, that we're losing our, our Assistant Assessor. Uh, she's resigned, uh, the, as of June thirtieth, um, and, uh, we're gonna have to fill that position. The board has, uh, come to me, uh, the Board of Assessors, they had, had asked, uh, for some help with posting, um, which I, I, I have, uh, gotten this posted in the newspaper, we're gonna post this on the website as well. Um, and, um, it's unfortunate, but, uh, you know, we had a really good team there, and it's unfortunate.
Priscilla's, she's great, she's very smart, very friendly, and we're sorry to lose her, um, but people find opportunities elsewhere and they move on.
Yeah.
But she's been great, she worked for the, us, um, for a little bit before Karen, and, um, she's always a pleasure to work with.
Yes, a very nice person. So, um, that, that, that posting is, is, is gonna be up there, um, and it will be in the newspaper as well, uh, for next week. Um, I did also, uh, receive a, just a letter from a, from a resident, uh, last week, um, and I just wanted to read it for the board for the record, um, so that they, that they're made aware of. Mr. Ferreira, "My husband and I have lived in Warren since nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, we live in a house his grandparents bought in, in nineteen twenty-seven. We raised three daughters and love the small-town area here. Uh, my concern is that the number of abandoned or foreclosed homes, uh, and houses, uh, it hurts me to see that these older homes are, are left to decay. In my opinion, they are treasures. I'm sure most of the abandoned homes are due to financial issues for the homeowners, uh, they just can't afford the repairs in needed, uh, and she understands that. There are at least five abandoned homes within a half a mile of us. Uh, she heard of a program on, uh, National Public Radio, uh, that may or may not be beneficial to the town. Uh, it's the Attorney General's Neighborhood Renewal Division, previously called the Abandoned Housing Initiative. I thought perhaps this may be something we could look into. I'm hoping instead of building new ones, these older homes could be renovated and housings and renewed for town. I hope you will look into this program." And I wanna thank you for the time to read my letter, Diane Razek. Um, well, you know, I, I did call this, this person back, um, I will be looking into this program, uh, for her, uh, but I, I did wanna bring that to the board's attention as a correspondent matter.
Very good, thank you.
Um, one other, uh, thing on my, uh, the final thing on my agenda, uh, this evening was to talk about administrative and policy updates, um, and I had spoken to Karen about, um, you know, some of the stuff that we could be doing over the summer. Um, and one of the issues, one of the things that we want to really look at, um, is our personnel file updates, going through them and making sure that, uh, we have all our compliances in place, we're gonna be doing some auditing and different checks internally just to make sure we're, we're compliant with everything. Um, and, uh, she's agreed to help me with that and that's really a, a, a big task that we're gonna be doing this summer. Um, other things that, that, that I think are critically important, um, are job description updates, reviewing, uh, the current job descriptions and updating them if needed, uh, making sure that we have updated ones and making sure that the ones that we have are, are up to date and reviewing them with people, uh, I think are critical. Um, one other thing that I've noticed that, that other communities have done and that I personally do that I think is, is, is very beneficial, uh, is a sign-in and sign-out book. Uh, this sign-in and sign-out book could be centrally located, um, in our mailroom or, or somewhere where it's easy for, for employees to access, just to sign in in the morning and sign out, um, and maybe let them know when your return time is. Um, I do that personally on my desk, I think it's very helpful for the public, um, especially if, if somebody's looking for a particular department or something, uh, that we have an access sign-in and sign-out book. Um, and, uh, eventually, uh, leading up to, uh, employee evaluations, uh, coming up with a, 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 a good, uh, system and a good questioning of how to handle employee evaluations, and a good employee evaluations. So, um, I would, I would, I'm not gonna start doing them right now, but what I would like to do is develop a form and a format for that, uh, have the board review it, look at it, um, and, um, we go from there. But those are the initiatives that, uh, I've wanted to get approval from the board, um, before I, you know, started on this stuff.
No, I'm, it's definitely promising, I think it's great. Um, we do need to do, uh, the employee evaluations, it's very important. Uh, we need to have initial evaluations so we can address what we expect of our employees, midpoint, how they're doing, um, where they need to improve or what they're doing well, and a final one. Um, and ultimately, you know, I, I know this is going down the line, is, you know, potentially having some sort of like, um, bonus program, if we could do something like that, some employees that are doing really well, we could give, you know, potentially a bonus to.
Like a recognition.
Like a recognition, um, for, for a good job, for a good year, you know, if they get in with a, a certain percentage of, um, you know, they're, they're eval, so, uh, they have to be a rating method for that. Um, but I think it's very important to be able to follow up with those so employees know. And if we do have a poor-performing employee, we can get them the need, um, so if they're, they're performing bad because they just don't know their job, or they're really bad at computer skills or something like that, we could identify that and maybe get them some training to help them, to make them a better employee and more efficient for the town, um, help them up. Um, but if they refuse to do that, we can also track that and administrative action at that point. But right now, we got a great crew of people and I think we need to really start showing them that we're recognizing that and identify that with them too. Um, and sit them down one-on-one, do those. So, yeah, I'm definitely in support of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't have anything like that currently, um, do we? We have nothing in our personnel bylaws for evaluations.
Well, in, in, in the, in the bylaws, they, they reference that there, there needs to be evaluations done, yeah.
But they just don't say how.
No.
Right, so we have to develop a format.
It's been up to, I think it's been up to probably the boards to evaluate their own people.
You can get ten different boards, ten different opinions.
That's right.
Ten different types of methods of doing it, so you can't really.
Yeah, I also think though it is important that the boards, once we get a format, that the boards do the evaluation for them and their people.
Yes. Yeah, because we can't do them for every board and you have boards that, um, they have employees working for them, they should be addressing these and going through the evals and making sure they do their job as managers or supervisors, um, to address that too. Um, but yeah, it's, we need to have something standardized so we all can do it. Yes, sir.
Also, if you identify where weaknesses are, for example, in, in, in the lack of knowledge and technology. remember, I offer myself to teach, so you can identify. We can start planning a in-house training course for all these employees that, you know, they could benefit from it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Were you thinking initial, midpoint, and final for an evaluation process?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, I think it's important to have that set up. Initial's important because you gotta tell people what you expect them. Midpoint's important because you gotta tell people when they're not doing well and what they need to correct, before you give them a final grade on it. And at the end of the year, you look at it and say, okay, well, during your midpoint, we talked about these points and how did you improve? Okay, you had no improvement, or hey, you did it, awesome, you corrected all these issues, fixed it, you increased, you know, increased, you know, whatever your process, and we can give them a fair rating on that.
I think it's also, though, we have a lot of elected, which don't necessarily have...
Well, we can't hold elected officials to that standard. But we do have a lot of employees that work for the town that should be all treated fairly, because they all fall under the personnel bylaw, whether they work for Planning Board or the Town Clerk's Office or the Assessor's Office. They all fall under one policy. So we all need to make sure we're following the same policy and not a bunch of different policies, which can be confusing, because say Planning Board's like, oh, I got mine and I get told this and this and that, and the Assessor's Office is like, what are you talking about? I didn't get that, where'd you get that from? You know, it's good to have a standardized process. You guys good with that?
You have questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, the sign-in and out, so it's a book, so it's kind of a log that's used?
Right.
Okay, all right. So every day, there's a new page, and then you can look back, you use that as part of it?
You know, you can just continue on down and just, you put the date in.
Okay. And that's used to what, to measure that employees are in at a certain time and out at a certain time? Or just to document?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not more or less for accountability purposes. It's more along the lines of, you know, I've gotten calls that, you know, you know, departments may be, that their hours say that they may be there, or they're not there, and, you know, it's tough to understand, and the public wants to kinda know where people are at some point. So if I had to reference the book or something saying, oh, this person went out for, you know, was out at the mail or is out on a training, you know, I can respond that way.
Okay. That's probably, that's gonna be a hard adjustment at first, would be my guess, to get people... Because they're, say it's in the mailroom, you know, before they go to the post office, they gotta remember to go to the mailroom and do that. So, that'll be, you know, a little bit of a hurdle, but...
Rich, if you guys may, I can work with Jim. We've done this in other projects. It's a way we work with tablets, we put tablets in all the entranceses. So you just go and put your PIN number or number or your name, and that takes you in and out. And then he can go online on his phone and see who's in and who's out, what time and everything.
Yeah, that would, or even on the desktop, right? So they would have...
Anywhere.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. It might be better than the central log. I mean, maybe, you know, you can get started with the paper log, but maybe something on the computer would be better.
Would that be something that would, like you could track, like, oh, like recall it? Not just like that day, but same day?
Yeah, have the whole history in there.
On December 5th, you know, was a certain employee in the office at that time, whatever?
Yep, they track all that.
Okay, yeah. How are evaluations, okay, so I'll pick on Board of Health. How does an evaluation work with a three-member board, Board of Health for Brianna? Is it an open meeting? Is it the chair? Is it you and the chair? See, if you are doing the evaluations, it seems clear-cut, but now you're talking about an open board. How does that work?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, I could definitely work with the board if that's, you know, that's their purview. Or if they wanna do it themselves, I can maybe give them instructions as to what's the best course of action to do it. Most of the time, it's the town administrator, the town manager that does them.
Oh, okay, so it's not like in an open meeting or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, all right. So you'd work with the board, most likely the chair of each board?
Typically, personnel matters are gonna be private.
Yeah, that's, but when you're talking about the board doing the evaluation, I wasn't sure what that exactly looked like?
No, typically, you would have a member of the board doing it, or the supervisor, the one person. Having, because we would have to do, say if we did Karen, we would have to do it in an open meeting to do that. And if we're doing that, private stuff could come up.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
And you don't wanna do that in an open meeting. So, you know, it's great to have somebody like Jim that you can default to and, you know, you can individually address any of our concerns and say, hey, you know, Karen, you know, I found Karen to be a very respectful person and delightful and pleasant. And you could say whatever, you could sit there and say, nah, she's mean, horrible, and she kicked me in the back, you know, and the butt the other day, you know, whatever. You know, and Jim can take those comments and put them together and, you know, assess that and sit her down and evaluate, you know?
All right, then how do we evaluate Jim?
Well, per my contract, you guys can do an evaluation and, you know, whenever you want.
But again, how would that...
But it would be, it would most likely be the same established process to keep it fair and equitable across the board and not reinvent the process, and it would be the same time. And we have to have fixed dates on when these things have to be done. So we need to have initial evals done within a certain month, midpoints halfway through the year, and then finals one year later, whenever that is.
Or would you do it on higher dates, do it according to higher dates?
Well, if you did it on higher dates, you have multiple higher dates going, and that's gonna cause a logistics nightmare.
Yeah.
And then it also confuses supervisors, because say somebody like Jerry, who has multiple employees, or Adam. It would be very confusing to sit there and track down, okay, Joe Schmo was hired in April, so I gotta do his initial, and then six months after April, I gotta do his midpoint, and then it would be confusing. So if you just do it as a standardized, September is when you do it. Typically, it follows the fiscal year. You know, whether it's that month, the beginning of the fiscal year is your initials, end of the fiscal year is your finals. So, it's typically how places do it. You know, but we don't have a standardized method here, so we didn't figure that out.
So I'll have to develop a method, you know, as long as I get the approval to do all this.
Yeah. So again, for Jim, it would almost have to be you evaluating Jim. Or, I mean, Derek and I could submit our opinions, but then because of...
I gotcha.
Oh, jeez. But because of quorum and everything, I mean, we couldn't, it would only be you and him that would meet, right?
You could do it in an executive session.
Okay, all right, okay.
So we're gonna have to hold off for a minute on this, because we have to take a break to allow WCAT 12 to switch over, because we've gone over our two hours. Travis, let us know when you're ready.
Facebook is still, it's on.
Still live on Facebook and still live on Zoom. All right, we're good. Thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna start up our meeting again here. There is a switch over now. So the last we were talking about is the evals, and did you have any more questions about them?
I don't think so.
Did you have any more questions?
No, sir.
Did you have anything else?
Yes, so if the board's okay with those HR components, then we can move forward that.
I'm good with it.
Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Okay, thank you. So the next thing I wanted to touch upon tonight was, I had an opportunity to go to the Board of Health's meeting last night, and it just, it so happened to be that I was stopping by to listen, see what was going on with the Rooster situation. And as I'm going to be making my way to all other boards as well, I wanted to remind all boards and commissions that this town has a social networking policy and that we need to be professional, and we're all public servants here. And, you know, if you wanna post something on social media about the town's event or there's a special function that's going on or a community event, that's one thing. But making it personal about somebody else or somebody's family or a town employee, there's no need for that, there's no need for that, none at all. And, you know, and I'm not just picking on the Board of Health, I just happened to be there that night, and, you know, I'm gonna be making my way to all of the other boards and commissions that the social media policy that was adopted by this board, or by the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I wanna see and make sure that all the boards have a copy of it, that they're aware of it, that they sign off on it. We're gonna have, we're gonna have it signed off on, and we're gonna keep a file in Karen's office, and it's gonna be locked up, you know, that we have all these things that have been signed on and that people are made aware of these policies. You know, some people may not even know these policies exist. So, you know, this is the first step in getting everybody on board and making aware that they have it, so that we can, you know, if something was to come up, we can pull the file and say, hey, look, you know, on such and such a date, this was signed, this was received by you, and you acknowledged it. So, you know, we have to keep everything on a professional level. And we're all public servants, we all wanna make sure that the town progresses in the right direction. And so, you know, that's one thing that I wanted to comment on, the social media policy.
Very good, thank you very much for that. And that goes for elected officials too, gotta remember, you're a representative of the town. And things you put on social media can be taken to heart. And you gotta remember, if you're an elected official, you're probably in a managerial position or supervisory position. And when you put disparaging remarks about an employee on social media, you can line yourself up into some trouble, because those employees have rights. And if you're saying something bad about an employee on social media, that can be taken as harassment. And that could put the town into a position where they could be sued by the employee. So it's not a very good thing to do, it's not a smart thing to do. We all have personal comments and thoughts and things like that, but they should remain personal and not expressed via social media, because other people have rights also. And we need to respect other people's rights. And if you're a private person, so be it. You know, it's polite to be respectful to others, and you should be. We should all be getting along and be kind to each other and respect each other, but we all know it's not a perfect world and that doesn't happen. Some people say bad things sometimes to others or spread misinformation about people. But as a town employee or an elected official for the town, you're held at a higher standard, because you are representing the town of Warren and not your own beliefs. Your own beliefs should be kept to yourself or in private and not put out via social media.
Good. And that was it, Mr. Chairman, for this evening's report.
Thank you very much, a good report.
Thanks.
Good job. It will reflect in your eval.
Oh, thanks.
All right. One thing I wanted to touch on with also, we also have a meeting with Cornerstone.
Yes, July 6th, yeah.
So, that's gonna be coming up. We're gonna be meeting with the president of Cornerstone and try to work out some details. We have had conversations with the commissioner of banks, and it was really stressed that the bank should have conversation with us and work out concerns. And their doors are still open, I believe.
Yes, I was in the bank today, doing business.
And until the Commissioner of Banks gives the, you know, the symbol of go ahead, they cannot close, they can't do their, you know, what they want to do. So at least we're at the table to still talk. So if people are wondering why the bank hasn't closed yet, it's because we're still talking with them and trying to work out details on what that would be like, or if we can come to an agreement, you know, reduced hours or something else. So we're working on it for the residents because we understand Cornerstone Bank is very important to a lot of our residents, especially our senior population, and we are very concerned about that for them, and we're trying to represent them the best we can.
And the bank is still open because the three of us, the four of us, sent letters. Other people in the town sent letters. Right, the commissioner said that they had not received this much comment about a closing, I think, ever, right?
They even want to name a new policy after us.
Yeah, so...
To prevent this type of closing again.
Yeah, so this town can be proud for standing up for ourselves. I mean, you know, we don't know what the outcome is, but at least we stood up.
We're doing our best.
And made a statement, so.
Everybody, you know, as you said, team effort, residents, everybody working together. It was very impressive for the Commissioner of Banks, typically in a situation like this, they get little to no input, and it just closes, and that's it. Nobody says anything. So it was good to see. They were very conflicted on what to do here. So we got that. All right. So good administrator's report. Comments and concerns?
Nope.
Nothing, sir.
Chairman? Anybody from Zoom, comments and concerns?
Nope.
Good. All right, moving on. Correspondence? We have some. West Warren Water District, they're implementing water restrictions. No non-essential water usage between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So no watering your lawns, things like that, no washing cars between those times. Okay? Did they say how bad we are right now?
She did not. She just sent me, she just sent me an email asking me to please post this on the website and have you announce it.
This is only for West Warren?
West Warren is the one that I got a phone call from today, not Warren.
This is West Warren?
Yes.
Water District.
Maybe, Jim, can you put a town alert?
Sure.
Stating that it's West Warren?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then we're gonna do a Facebook post?
Awesome.
All right, and then...
It is on the website already.
Facebook too. Put out Facebook town alert. And this is, did they give how long, or they just say?
She did not say.
Until further notice?
Yeah.
And then, next thing we have, concerts in the park start Friday, July 1st, 6:00 PM. Then every Friday in July at Dean Park. So please, definitely go see, support it. You know, the Parks Department does a great job trying to throw events and come up with things for the town to do. And these are things that, you know, I think all families can go to and enjoy and, you know, take part in. And do we have their flyer? Go all the way to the end.
Go under correspondence.
So on July 1st, we have The Highwayman with Matt York. And then Friday, July 8th, at 6:00 PM, we have Wonderland Mafia and Free Touch a Truck event. Friday, July 15th, at 6:00 PM, we have Throwback to the 60s and a bounce house for free. I don't want you guys in the bounce house, okay?
Well, then I'm not going.
You can touch a truck though. I think they can have fire trucks.
He touches enough of the truck.
And then Friday, July 22nd, at 6:00 PM, Lyle Pierce and Company and Free Popcorn Night. There we go.
Yeah.
The other thing that I posted after I did this is I posted for the summer rec program that they're having, and they're having tennis lessons for the kids.
Oh.
And then between July, I think it's July, I don't remember the dates, I'm sorry. It is on the website, but they're having their summer camp. It's $50 per child or $100 per family.
Okay.
So, and it's until noon, 9:00 to noon.
And what ages?
I don't think it said an age thing. It's on the website, though, and you'll see, and then you'll see also, if you click on the little link, it brings you to where you need to fill out and send in.
Okay, very good. So Parks is busy. Good job. Kudos to them and their hard work. All right, anybody have any questions about that? Okay. So moving on to our next meeting date, which is June 23rd, 2022, at 6:00 PM. I think we're pretty much good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. We are adjourned.